Item 2A is an ordinance. Do you want to read that?
It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property located in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row map 42, parcel 65.12, 1.03 acres from RM 12 to RS 10.
Is there any public, present citizens, that would like to speak on this subject Item 2B.
It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Horn Tavern Road, owned by Walter C. Totty and wife Beverly D. Totty, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres from R 40 to R 20.
I just like the record to show that I will not be asking information. I have personal interest on the property. Would you ask for the citizens, please?
Are there any citizens here wishing to speak this evening on that issue?
None, Mayor.
I'd like a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, December 19th, 2013. First item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. Those who would, please join us. Please stand. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for the bountiful blessings that you've put upon our community and us as families in the community. Thank you for keeping your hand in safety as we go into the season. Let us be thankful. Let us be grateful. Let us remember the reason for the season. Lord, let us be a blessing and a light to you. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
May I have your prayer?
Second.
We have an addition of 7D, old business. We'd like to add, discuss, and/or take action of the recommendation from the Board of Commissioners workshop on the LPRF grant, City Center Greenway. We'll add that as 7D. Would there be any other additions or deletions this evening? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is number three, citizens' comments. We have one citizen comment this evening, Mr. Tim French. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to talk. I hope I'm not out of order for talking about the special called session the other night that I attended. I was here, and some of the things I heard were troubling. And in my line of business, I try to think, is that a problem? Or is it a symptom? And when I was listening to this, I couldn't help but remember something similar to this happened a few years ago. We cleared it in front of City Hall. And after that was done, we found out documentation had not been filled out or a bond had not been deposited. So what we have here is a repetitive process. And in my line of business, that's symptomatic. So I started thinking, well, what's the problem? What's the bigger problem? And it seems like there's a lack of process and a lack of controls. In today's age, there should never be these kind of things going on. There should be systems and controls in place. Anybody up here, up there, should be able to look up and say, we've had a request for a build-out. What steps have been taken? What documents have been filed? Those things should be imaged and indexed and brought up. And that's not expensive to do today. That's my life. That's my business. I design those things. And it just seems like we're keeping the human element involved. And as long as you have human elements involved with paper and folders and files, things are going to get lost. Things are going to get missed. The planning committee, they should have had something coming on saying, hey, I've had some documents signed. Why have we not had a meeting on this? What's going on? Hey, Don, or whoever the city codes director is, why are we missing these things? So the real issue here is, in my eyes, not so much what occurred, it's why it occurred and how did it occur? We need to put things in place. We do a great job here of defining what we need. Terry Harris identifies needs. We all identify needs for the police, fire, park, everything. But we're spending too much time looking at grass while the building's falling down. You know, I would just urge you guys to consider, in your remediation processes, you've got a very smart man right over there, that we put processes in place that take the human element out of this and really, really automate and put controls in it. If you want to change your behavior, you've got to have measurements. How do you have measurements? Systems and controls and processes that are repeatable, controllable, and measurable. And I think if we do that, we won't have issues like this occurring again. And it was really, like I say, disappointing to hear. And I hope you guys can come up with a way that prevents a broad type of issue like this from happening again, because we're better than that here. We really are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is awards and recognitions. I would like to recognize we have candidate Ms. Judy Oxford. Ms. Judy Oxford, thank you. Welcome. Is anyone else in the thing? Any other awards or recognitions from staff?
No, ma'am.
From the board this evening? Next item is number five, public announcements.
We passed it on the emissions testing on Mondays and Tuesdays. I'm starting to know.
I would like also, someone asked me the other day about the website. And I'd like that to be said, as much as the emissions, that we have a wonderful website, and it does have a lot of user-friendly things. It does have a lot of information on it. And it does keep you updated. There is an ability for you to put your email in, and it's fairview-tn.org. And if you want to keep up with the Fairview happenings, it does alert and send emails out of the recent postings. Any other public announcements from the board? Next item is the approval of the minutes, the revised minutes for the November 21st, 2013, special call Board of Commissioner meeting. What are the wishes of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 6B, the minutes for the November 21st, 2013, Board of Commissioners meeting. What are the wishes of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
First and second, discussion?
I just had one spot. If you could take a look at correcting, when it was talking about under the Commissioners' comments, it was referring to the clarification of the cameras. And the way it reads, it makes it appear that I had originally voted. Do you see what I'm talking about? The first line, Commissioner Kara clarified her vote for cameras, not for alone, already passed the 12 cars, but we will need safety equipment. And so could you just clarify? Because it did pass, but I didn't necessarily. So I'd appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6C, the minutes for December 5th, 2013, Board of Commissioner meeting.
Move for approval. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, 7A, old business. Second and final reading of Bill 2013-25.
It is an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row map 42, parcel 65.12, 1.03 acres from RM 12 to RS 10. Is he here? He told me.
Is someone here representing this?
He told me he would be here an hour and a half ago, and he's not here. I make a motion to defer.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Are we deferring until later in the meeting?
We can do that and then to the next meeting if he doesn't show before it's up.
Okay.
He needs to be present, correct, Larry?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 7B, second and final reading on Bill 2013-26. I'd like the records to show that I have personal interest in the property, and I will be recruiting myself from discussion and/or vote. I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Johnson.
This is an ordinance, Bill number 2013-26, ordinance number 821, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Horn Tavern Road, owned by Walter C. Totty and wife Beverly D. Totty, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres from R 40 to R 20. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Totty?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know that we did not get coordinated enough to finish up our business on the Williamsport subdivision. And I know this is a different subdivision, but I think based upon the public perception, until we get that all settled, that I think we should defer the passage of this until that's settled. Make a motion that we defer this until we have a chance to close out the Williamsport. Also, the Totty's property.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, I have, Mr. Totty, when would you plan on starting this subdivision?
Hmm.
Is that something you're wanting to do immediately, or is it?
Well, a month or two.
Any further discussion?
I don't anticipate that the vote to be held up a long time. I just think that we need to, the way we left it the other night at the special hearing was that we were going to have one more hearing where we could discuss the mayor's interest in the property and if any action or anything is needed to clean that all up.
So put this.
And so I think we could put it back on the agenda.
Second meeting in January?
In January. It shouldn't have any trouble. This should not, we should be well-finished, I think. Would that mess you up too bad, Mr. Totty?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
I think deferring with Mr. Totty saying that it won't adversely affect him until the second meeting in January, if that's the wishes of the board, I have no problem with that. But I would caution the board that unless there's some reason at that meeting, unless there's some reason that, for example, it doesn't fit the land use plan, or there's something wrong with the, maybe if there's lots that are not buildable or something of this nature, we would have to, they're entitled to vote up or down at that meeting either. You can't, it's a legislative function, and you can't be forced to rezone anything other than you can't be arbitrary and capricious.
I understand.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out so it's on the record.
Mr. Totty, have you been notified by anyone from the city that would say this did not conform to the land use plan?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
We're going to move back up to the deferred 7A, discuss, second and final reading of Bill 2013. Can you read it again?
I'll read it again. Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row map 42, parcel 65.12, 1.3 acres from RM 12 to RS 10. Move for approval.
Second.
We have first and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Item 7C, second and final reading of Bill 2013-27.
It's an ordinance to amend the City Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title 13, Property Maintenance regs, Chapter 4, Tree Planting and Protection, Section 13-409, Community Tree Plan. Move for approval.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, 7D is the discuss and take action on the recommendation from the Board of Commissioners workshop for the City Center Greenway project. I was going to, yeah. I gave it to you to rewrite. I'm sorry, I forgot. Thank you. The Board of Commissioners had a workshop at 6:00 today, and the purpose of that was back in October 17th, 2013, the Board of Commissioners voted to reject all the bids for the City Center Greenway, which was the project that's been in discussion on the project list that goes from City Hall over to the second pavilion at Bowie Park. And they rejected all, the bids were rejected, and that they have rejected the, are turning the grant, let me catch where I'm at, sorry, does not wish to proceed on this project. We have other park system projects that we would like to discuss in the near future. The city understands the grant funding associated with this project will be forfeited as a result of the board's decision. We greatly appreciate the opportunity for this project and look forward to working with you in the future. And this is to the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation. Wanted to give any updates. Did anyone else want to share anything about the workshop?
For approval.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and an approval to approve the letter with revisions and send it in rejection of the grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 8A, discuss and/or take action on easement for power line renovation. Mr. Matthew Bean with Middle Tennessee Electric, welcome. Thank you for your time and your attention to this matter.
Basically, Middle Tennessee Electric is looking to upgrade the facility on Crowcut Road. We're building a new feeder line that'll actually go out to 96. Essentially, three phases of that project have been completed on the north side of Ococks Pike. This section of line we're talking about, essentially, it's really cross-country for us, and it's hard for us to access. As you can see here, this section of Crowcut Road here, we've actually completed that in that one phase is here. We're talking about the section just out of town here. Let's see, I'm sorry, here. This is the next phase we're working on here. And that's going to border your Bowie Park. So essentially, what we're wanting to do is actually move that line that's so far off the road that we can't get to and access easily, move it to the back part of Bowie property here and run down that outer edge under the TVA line that crosses there at the park to get us easy access to the power utility line, where currently it's way off the road and hard for us to get to. So essentially, the line we have currently is a small conductor, and we're building a lot larger conductor. So we're going to have a whole lot more poles due to the weight of the conductor. But the long-term plan is there'll be a substation for our, this is our basic, essentially, our infrastructure. Essentially, there'll be a substation somewhere around Pinewood Road. Eventually, there'll be two circuits come up. And what it does, it gives us more reliability and flexibility in far as the infrastructure goes for the city of Fairview. Can you go to the next slide? Yeah, this essentially, this is the first part of the project. This is actually the Jingle Substation here. We're going to go up the existing TVA route here. And essentially, what we want to do, this is how far this line actually goes off the road. What we want to do is move it up the road and follow Crowcut Road. Can you go to the next slide? This is the part where it actually involves the city of Fairview. The property actually starts about right here. So essentially, what we do is, what I've talked to some of the city manager is, there's a possibility this road may widen later down the road. So essentially, we're going to set these poles off 20 foot to do it one time and not have to do it again. The problem up through here for y'all is we'll have to cut, we have a 40-foot easement, what Middle Tennessee Electric has. The water line is actually currently up there also. So we'll be basically cutting trees essentially here and essentially here. We would have to actually dip under the TVA line since it's so low to maintain proper clearance. So we're looking at actually, you probably have manholes, which they're buried, on the outer edges of the TVA right-of-way. This is where it continues on around on the city property here. I think this actually goes to the second parcel. I think, you can't see it good, I think y'all have another piece of property that starts somewhere in here. But this also borders the back part of the Bowie Park also. And you see, and the red is where the existing line is, and you can see how far that actually is off the road. So it would benefit us greatly if we can get it more accessible. This gives you more of a kind of relation with the trees. So essentially, you're coming up through here, and we're cutting the trees from here, essentially right here where it makes the turn. And then actually, the line is actually by the road for that section of Crowcut.
What size easement do you currently?
40-foot easement. So 20-foot, 20-foot of that easement, it can actually hang some of it in the roadway. That's fine. But we maintain a 40-foot easement.
And you're asking for an additional easement?
We don't have a right-of-way to put that utility line on the Bowie Park that the city owns. That's what we're asking for, is a right-of-way giving us permission to put those poles on the backside of Bowie Park for those two parcels.
So the right-of-way currently, or the?
Right-of-way is currently here. That red, that's the existing line.
That's what you were saying about not able to reach it.
It's not as easy accessible. If you go back one more slide, see, one more, one more. See how far this line is off the road? That's the main feeder line now that's currently there.
Is that line going to go away?
That's correct. Essentially, this red part would be moved out to the main road.
What do we have as an easement there, just a city easement now? Public Works. Okay, anybody?
I don't think the city would have an easement there at all. That's on private property. That goes through Jack Cannon's farm.
Don't we have, no, no, I'm talking about the blue line there.
That's the proposed electric utility line.
Right. And what do we have as a city right-of-way already on that, off of the road?
On Bowie Park is concerned? I don't have no idea.
What?
Keith making answer.
How much?
So 50-foot county right-of-way, I guess, or city right-of-way.
Okay.
I'll be outside, I'll be on the private, I'll be on Bowie with that 40-foot easement.
You're wanting 40 foot from center line or 40 foot from the other?
I have to have 40 foot from the center line of the utility line, 20 foot on either side. So it's a 40-foot total. So 20-foot of it can fall in the roadway.
20-foot would fall into the park.
That's correct.
How does the conservation easement address this, or does it?
They will have to approve it.
Have you had any experience dealing with the conservation, you have the land trust people and the conservation easement? Do you know how they judge this?
I actually talked to Emily Parrish just the other day about this, and they would have to be on the, kind of the contract that we would offer, sign them to approve it. They would also have to be on there to sign it. So they would have to have pictures of this so they could approve it. And she didn't see a big issue with this. And they actually just got done. Emily said they just approved one for Middle Tennessee, another parcel land that was also under conservation easement, not here in the city, but.
Terms of trails, Keith, only the perimeter back there would have to be moved, huh?
Would have to look into that. I really think the only one that it may hit.
It's a close-up area, Keith.
Yeah.
Somewhere right here.
Where it comes up to the road.
And these cross that area, you can't really see those. Those are verbal commitments I've had from homeowners that I've met currently out there as far as moving it to the road. You can't, you can't see it really. Y'all might can see it better there. We've got a lot of people that have committed to it, that I've met so far. Y'all are a major piece of the puzzle as far as getting this more accessible.
The ones that haven't committed, how will you address that?
That'll be an issue where, since you're kind of one of the big pieces of the pie to say, I wanted to meet with y'all, with the city first, and then I can go back and talk to them. So I still have to get their approval also. And the ones that I've talked to are all just verbals. They're not actually signed right-of-ways yet.
So if they don't sign them, then what's the next move?
If it comes down to a situation where maybe we have one, we say one or two that would keep it, because it's a major feeder line, if we have one or two, it might be a situation where we'd probably go to condemnation, but that'd be something our board would have to approve.
The benefit of this to y'all is that you have easier access.
Yes, and it's the largest conductor that we have. So it's easier access. You're talking about quicker restoration of light. It's, I mean, the lights don't go out when it's sunny usually. It's usually wet and muddy. And essentially, some of this stuff here, we'd probably have to get drugging with a Dozer to get to if it was wet.
And that was, that was the buy-in for us, is that restoration of service will be much faster.
That's correct. And this is part of the infrastructure for the growth for the city of Fairview.
And you say this is going out to Highway 96?
Yes, sir. The park from Ococks Pike to Highway 96 is complete, that section of the feeder line. This is one phase. It'll stop, and there's only going to be one more phase left on Crowcut Road, which will make the complete tie.
Would y'all be willing to help us move that trail?
I don't see that being a problem. I can't. I'd have to ask somebody, to be honest with you. I don't know that that would be a problem, but I have to approach someone to get you an answer on that.
I don't think this board would have the authority to approve something without the approval of the land trust. So we would need to inquire with the land trust and be able to present this for their approval, so then we could stand to see that their approval is first.
Okay. You want me, I'll get with them and get the proper maps and stuff, what they need to do, what they need to do. And then would that, would that be okay then?
The land trust doesn't have any issue with it. I think in the long term, it's beneficial for us. So I wouldn't have any problem voting for it. I just don't want to get sideways with you.
Yeah, the land trust is the first, yes.
I would almost make a motion tonight to approve it subsequent to the land trust, and you getting back to us saying whether your people are willing to help us move that trail.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Keith, as far as this goes, do you see any problems with the location? I mean, it's kind of hard to tell on their map, but have you seen the exact location?
I have. It's also going to benefit, I don't know if you guys have ever been down that road when it rains. There's not a very good drainage system, so we'll be able to actually put a ditch line in there that's going to keep the water from settling on the roads. So it's really going to help that portion of it.
Except for that part of the park that we talked about with the trail, the other is not currently being utilized other than for wildlife and stuff. So there's no, it's not like there'll trail or people access that. It's really that part that abuts. Crowcut doesn't have any purpose at all.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, may I interject one thing? This may be nitpicky, but I believe the Vice Mayor's motion said, subsequent to the land trust, I think you mean subject to the land trust.
Yes, sir.
Let's play on words, but it could be important.
Yes, sir.
I might add, all these trees that'll be cut are pine trees that we're looking at for thinning the forest anyway. That he will be cutting.
Would you restate your motion, please?
My motion is to grant them approval for the project. If the land trust signs off on it, they give us their approval. And that Middle Tennessee Electric is, people he needs to talk to are willing to help us move that trail that's gonna be adversely affected.
I want clarification. You are saying "help with" or "move it for us"? Because, yeah, I think that needs to be clarified.
Y'all are gonna go in and clear all the trees out anyway?
That's correct, that's correct.
So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know that they have to... Keith, what are the condition of the trail that they're at now? Are they all mulch or are they just? If, if they, I mean, you could, if your people approve it as a dirt track, I mean, I don't see there's an issue, so... Let him bring back what he can do. They're gonna have all the equipment there anyway doing it, so...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure the wording is not where they come back and say, "No," then all of a sudden we're, you know, then we're stuck with the bill or doing it ourselves or... So can you give clarification? Is it worded where?
Pretty much, my motion is for them to, if they need to relocate our trail, it's in the same condition it is now.
Okay, but if they need to relocate, we want them to, right?
Correct, that's what he's gonna get permission to do.
So that we will, you will relocate the trail. I just don't want those ifs and, you know, I want it to be clear that we want the trail moved. At no cost to us.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Item 8B, discuss and/or take action on the financing for the fire truck. CFO, Mr. Doughty?
Thank you. I was asked to get a quote from Highland Public Capital. I've got a letter from Brad Shobel that provides three options for the new fire truck. It's annual payments for $132,268 per year at 2.3% interest rate. The next is a seven-year for an annual payment of $97,745 at 2.6% interest rate. And the third option is a 10-year, $72,070 payment at 2.8%. On the next, I mean, I personally feel like if a loan is gonna be taken, this is probably the time to take it as far as our cash flow going into December, January, from what I have been able to look back in the records. But like I said, this is, this is your choice as far as what you... I personally feel like less interest is best and shorter term is best. Just, just my opinion. But on the five-year, we would pay approximately $43,285.86 on interest. It's provided on the amortization schedule. If you have, on a seven-year, we would pay $65,896.85 interest. And on a 10-year, we would pay $98,621.30 interest. A lot of it boils down to two items. Number one, what do we want to pay on interest? Number two, cash flow. You know, you're gonna pay pretty close to the same amount of interest per year regardless of a loan. You're gonna pay $8,657.17 annually on the five-year, $9,413.84 on the seven-year, and $9,862.13 on the 10-year. So I talked to Chief Cooper, and he said the truck should have a minimum of a 20-year life, hopefully more. But that's, I believe that as far as rate, it's gonna be hard-pressed to beat. And also, as far as, also, it's, the first payment's not due until the, a year out, 360 days, so...
Vote for approval of the five-year.
Discussion? Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Planning Commission seat. Last meeting, we had a few people that spoke. Is there anyone here tonight that was not here? Show a hand. I wanted to make sure, we had just asked what your interest is, and I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to share that with the board. What are the wishes of the board?
Mayor, are we going to fill both seats tonight? Was that determined?
Do we have an official accepted resignation from Mr. Smith? Does that have to be received at the Planning Commission, or is it this board receives it?
I believe it has to be received at the Planning Commission.
Then it's not official? So I didn't, I was asking to say, to answer you. So one, we have Mr. Mangram, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Butler, and Mr. Lowman that is still an applicant. Other applicants have requested for withdrawal and to possibly interested in future times. I would like to make a recommendation for Mr. Rowe to be the Planning Commission nominee. Are there other nominees from the board?
I would like to recommend Mr. Mangram.
Are there nominations from the board?
Can I ask a question, Mayor? Once the official resignation is accepted, then we will go back through the process again to pick another...
Offering for, well, offering for applications for vacancy.
Right. Any of these folks that wanna be considered for that one too?
They can stay considered.
Stay, they'll just stay considered.
Good question, yes, sir.
So we're gonna fill one tonight and then possibly fill one and get on the second? We meet again?
We can solicit for application, well, no, we can't do it until the Planning Commission receives its recognition, which would be the...
It's always open. We are always receiving applications.
I'm just trying to figure out how long it will be before we fill. Will we be able to fill it?
Well, the second Tuesday in January would be then, so it would be the second meeting in January that we'd be open.
Sure, in January, and then by February, there'll be a full board again. So we would fill it again and...
The Vice Chair would probably, would run the January meeting, and then it would have the filling of the February.
They will completely elect new officers at the next meeting in January.
Well, I would, I would like clarification though, because if we are actually appointing the position, and we've already received a letter of resignation, you know, why can't we? Can you explain that to me? If somebody's already, you've received the letter, right?
Yes, received it yesterday afternoon. And I believe that any time that I've ever sat on the Planning Commission, I know when I resigned, I submitted it to the chairman that night as, you know, effective, you know. I think Larry can correct me, but I believe that's the process.
Up until the time that they actually, it's accepted by, all this board appoints those members, up until the time that his resignation is actually presented to a meeting of the Planning Commission, he could technically withdraw it.
All right, let me ask a question, and I think we legally would have the right to do this. He has submitted his resignation. This board has the right to remove any member at any time. Could we not just accept his resignation and remove him from the board tonight?
If you did that, you would have to make that as part of the motion that this board formally accepts his resignation. The only two, the only people that this board can't remove from the Planning Commission is the mayor, or the mayor's appointee, if the mayor's not sitting on the board. But that would have to be part of your motion.
Then we can appoint them both tonight.
Well, and I don't mind waiting. It just seems like if we are, it just seems like if we already know, then I hate to just prolong, you know, we already have five people.
That way, we can have a full board seated in January. Unless you formally... When they elect their officers.
We're going from "we have to present it to the Planning Commission" to "we don't." So how about we get clarity on that?
Okay, you, if, if you're going to accept the resignation as the board, you are officially accepting his resignation. And also, and that needs to say, this board is formally accepting his resignation and formally removing him from the board, from the Planning Commission. Then you can go ahead and fill it. If you don't, technically, he would have a right to rescind his resignation up until the time that it's submitted to the Planning Commission. But again, this board being the one that appoints him, he has submitted his resignation. You can take that as, as he, it meant what he said. But you would need to say, the motion would need to say, "We accept his resignation, and we formally remove him from the board and declare the position vacant." Then you can go ahead and fill it. If you don't do that, then you're gonna have to wait until it's actually presented to the board, because he could withdraw it. If you formally accept it and remove him from the board, then he can't withdraw it.
What are the wishes of the board?
Can we...
I think we fill one tonight and one in January when Commissioner Sutton is back to give him some input, at least into one of the positions. Otherwise, I would say, let's do it. If he was here tonight, I'd say, let's go ahead and do it. But with him not here, isn't there a candidate that we're not sure about?
Ms. Lacy? Is that who you're speaking of?
Yeah. So that would give us time to clarify that.
But if she was notified duly to be at the other one and said, "I want to withdraw," and I assume she was notified for this one, so I'm gonna take that as she has stated, not at this time?
I can go either way, whatever you guys want to do. If we're gonna fill a second one, I would like to nominate Mr. Butler. If we're not gonna fill two, then I would like to save that nomination. I'll nominate Mr. Butler at the January meeting.
We have three recommendations. How do we vote for three recommendations?
First of all, if you're gonna fill, you need to determine whether you're gonna fill one seat or two seats.
But we don't have a motion one way or the other, so...
If I, if I may, Mayor, I wanna make a motion to formally accept Mr. Smith's resignation and therefore remove him from that seat immediately.
I second that.
Freeing up the vote for two slots tonight.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, that is moving along. We have now two vacant seats by wishes of the board for the Planning Commission seat and three nominations.
I would say, Mayor, that we take a piece of paper and write down two votes, and then if a runoff is needed...
We have, we have the list, we can just put a check mark next to the two.
Oh, yeah. Then if a runoff is needed, we have a runoff.
Excuse mine, 'cause I wrote...
It's her jot sheet.
Should we one or two it, or?
No, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Well, it might if we've got a split and we have to do that. You watch Survivor?
Wait, 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 I want my back. It happened so quick, I was scribbling, I wanna make sure I did what I wanted to. Yeah, okay.
You wanna make a vote for it?
Yeah, could you, I just, you know, we're sitting, I'm, sorry. I was cleaning my paper for my doodles, sorry. My notes.
That might make for some interesting votes.
Y'all will know which one's mine.
We won't.
We have three votes for Brandon Butler, three votes for Mr. Mangram, one vote for Mr. Lowman, and one vote for Mr. Rowe.
Okay, Mr. Mangram and Mr. Butler, congratulations. You have been appointed to the Planning Commission. And Mr. Hall would be glad to give you a schedule of the future meetings. January, the second Tuesday of the month. Do I have a motion to accept them?
Motion to accept their appointments.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you for your willingness to serve. City Manager, items for discussion.
Mayor, all I have tonight is I want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. And I thank the board for a good year, and maybe a better one in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous updates, staff comments?
This is November's... November is historically, from what I can pick up, kind of sluggish on the revenue side. But as you see, we should be at 42% on our, on our budget, and we brought in 27% in revenues. County sales tax led the way. Our property tax kicked in a little bit there towards the end of the month. But we're going into our, as y'all all know better than I, our collection season. So I guess let's go to expenses. We've got, we're a little bit over, we should be at 42%. We're at 48%. We've had some outlay that is one-time. We've had some streets paved. And then I can go into, I have done some research. And if there's any questions on any of these, I'd be, I feel competent to answer for the most part. I did leave a more detailed report with each of you. But, any questions?
Could we have on your report, please? And I know Ms. Crystal had just kind of started working with, given us a, kind of a summer... Could you include that in the future?
Sure.
And I'll kind of ask you the same question I asked Crystal in December of last year, if I recall. What are we gonna do when we're at 27% revenue and 42% projection? What do you do?
It's a good question. I think, I think the main thing, I'm really excited about the committee that's being looked at. I think, I think timing is everything. And we need to really watch the timing of expenditures. And I think that's key.
I think a good answer is stay tight with the money.
Yes.
And that's, I guess, where, and I asked her, and it was pretty much, "We don't spend anything we don't have to." Because that, that's a pretty good margin there of the income not being there. And, you know, if the income's not there, the expenditures are the ones that's gonna screech.
Right.
Or should screech.
Right.
Okay? Any comments for Mr. Doughty this evening? Thank you, appreciate that. I know it, you, this is your first report. You did great.
Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney comment? Oh, we have other staff. Sorry. Staff comments?
The Yankee Dixie concert was canceled and moved to the 21st at 3:00 PM. That's a Saturday. We also have the Memory Tree, 21st, from 12 to 3:00. Hope everyone can come out and enjoy.
Thank you very much. Any other staff comments this evening? City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to welcome the two new Planning Commission members to their, their new commission seats. Look forward to working with them. Want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe one. And thank the city for putting up with me for another year. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications from the commissioners. Commissioner Bissell?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't get so much. If anybody in the audience was here, is here tonight expecting that there's going to be another meeting, there's not. They, we're going to have to reschedule that for some time in the future. And, and so there will be no special meeting after this meeting in case there was any confusion based upon my motion in the previous special meeting. Other than that, I wish everybody very happy holidays and safe if you're traveling. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight, as always and recently. It's great to see new faces. It's great seeing the old ones that are always interested. But I always love seeing people from the community that hadn't been in a while come out. It really does make a difference, just hearing your opinion, seeing your faces, knowing your wants and desires. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Thanks to the staff for a great job, and enjoy the time with your family.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Merry Christmas to everyone. That's all I have.
Doing, thank you. I'll kind of be redundant, but I do pray peace and goodwill to all men. And I do ask that you take time to remember the reason for the season. And I do ask God to bless each and every one of you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor? Good evening.